Twenty eighth, notices have been placed in district additional copies reported to News Graphic and One Heave. And we'll start with the presentation of budget. Hold on. Jen.
Welcome to the 2014-15 budget hearing. Each year, Wisconsin school districts are required to hold an annual budget hearing. The 2014-15 budget information included in the budget hearing document is the same as the preliminary budget, which was approved at the July 16th School Board meeting. If you don't have a packet, you can find it at the back table in the back of the room. It is also posted on the district website on the business office. The budget document contains budget information as required by Wisconsin statutes, and I will review several key points as set forth in this document. The second page of the document contains a list of contents that includes School Board members, district office administration, and school principals. The third page of the document is an executive summary. This summary indicates that this is a budget for the fiscal year 2014-15, and that it was prepared in accordance with requirements set forth by Wisconsin statute and Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. It is important to note that regardless of the difficult financial changes for employees and the district, all staff has found a way to continue to set a high standard for academic performance. We are extremely proud of our staff and students, and appreciate the continued generosity received from the community. Budgeting in a school district is always a challenging process. It is important to note, as stated in the fourth paragraph of the summary, that several key factors are still needed to calculate the final adjusted budget and tax levy. This includes the Third Friday Pupil Comp, which is completed by the district in September and conferred by DPI in October. The equalized property valuation, which is received from the Department of Revenue in early October. And lastly, the final equalization aid amount, which must be received by DPI no later than October 15th. As always, the final revised budget and tax levy will be presented for approval at the October School Board meeting after all the numbers are received and reviewed. The next page of the document, which can be found in front of the first orange sheet, is a table of contents. It shows the remaining portion of this document subdividing into three sections. Section one is the budget process information. Section two is budget information and terminology. And section three is the proposed budget. Page one in the first section discusses the annual operating budget and lists the budget adoption procedures. The district did adhere to requirements as listed by posting the budget and the date of the budget hearing in the News Graphic on July 31st. Page two lists the time findings to develop the budget. As you can see, the budget process began in November 2013 with the budget recommendations and impact statements presented to the Personnel and Finance Committee in April. The board approved these recommendations in April along with revisions in May and June. The items highlighted in orange are the budget items that require board approval. The preliminary budget approved in July, and the same budget that is here tonight. As previously stated, in October, when the final numbers are reviewed and received, the board will certify the final adjusted budget and tax levy. And finally, certified budget will be forwarded to the DPI and the tax levy to municipal clerks by the November 10th deadline. Section two of this document contains the budget and comp number information. Page three is a review of revenue factors and describes how the district's revenue is based on a three-step process. The equation is revenue limit formula minus general state aid is equal to the property tax levy. Step one of the equation is the first and most critical step in the budget development process. Revenue caps were implemented in 1993-94 as a means of controlling increases in school property tax levies. The revenue limit operates as a control on the combined amount of property taxes and general state aid available to operate our schools. Step two of the equation is general aid, which for our district is equalization aid. We are currently using a DPI July aid estimate, but as discussed at previous meetings, I do expect this to increase when the final aid is received in July. The current estimate is based on budgeted numbers used by the board, and I do an estimate based on what our actual numbers to be. The amount of equalization aid we receive is important because it directly impacts an increase or decrease to the tax levy. Finally, step three determines the tax levy. Applying the equation, revenue limit minus equalization aid equals tax levy, produces a 1.96% tax levy increase for the Seaterburg School District this year. Page four of the document is new for this year. It charts the percentage change in equalization aid and the property tax levy and provides a glance look at what happens to the tax levy based on the decrease or increase in aid. Provided is information beginning with the 2003-4 school years through the estimate for the current 2014-15 school year. I hope in future years that I can take a look at this and then provide some history as to why the numbers were up or down. Pages five through seven provide descriptions of fund, revenue, and expenditure funds. Page five describes the funds in which school budgets must be segregated. The main accounts the district uses is Fund 10, the general fund, and Fund 27, the special education fund. Page six describes the revenue or source accounts used to create the budget. The chart at the bottom of the page illustrates a breakdown of total revenue for the general and special education funds. As you can see, the revenue budget totals $32,310,914. This chart reflects 1% of the total budget each account type represents. As you can see, taxes represent 60.89%, and state aid 31.18%. And these two represent the majority of our revenue budget. Page seven provides expenditure account definitions by object. The object describes a type of service provided such as salary, benefit, or purchase service. This is a different view from the budget from the DPI adoption listed later in this document. The chart attached at the bottom allows us to see that our salary and benefits budget represents 79.14% of the total expenditure budget. This budget is equal to the revenue described on the previous page. If you recall, last year, the expenditures were greater than revenue due to use of fund balance to complete the security project that we had approved. Page eight contains budget highlights for the 2014 budget. Resident enrollment is currently projected to be down 21 students, and this budget is based on 198 open enrollment students, which may grow slightly when the budget is revised in October. Also listed at this stage are staffing changes and capital projects that will be completed by technology and building student housing apartments. Many of these have actually already been completed during the summer. Page nine is a requirement by the state for our employee benefit trust fund. This fund was established in 2006-7, and the current balance in this fund is $328,461. This fund was established to account for costs related to post-retirement benefits and the entries required to make in order to receive categorical aid. These transactions are based on information contained in our actuarial study and is audited by DPI and our district independent auditor. Next month, we will present the updated actuarial study, which happens every two years. The second item listed on this page was a new requirement of the 2013 Wisconsin Act 20 and first reflected in the budget document last year. Districts were required to increase fund aid, the fund aid portion of the property tax, and then report here what the funds are used for. As stated in this document, the primary use of these funds is for the purpose of serving the community. Cedarburg uses fund aid to record artistic performances at the PAC and the percent of operations for staffing utilities. You will also notice I had to include this information in the written agenda for the regular board meeting, which is a requirement by statute. 63% of this budget, or $66,600, is funded by the local tax levy. It is important to note that we have not increased this levy since the 2009-10 school year. The third section of the document is the proposed budget. Again, this is the same budget that was approved by the board last month in July. Page 10 of the document is the budget projection and reconciliation spreadsheet. This is a document that is used to track changes throughout the budget process. As you will see, we started with an initial budget gap of just over $500,000 when first presented to the Personal, Finance, and Finance Committee in February. The current budget reflects a positive balance of $299,000. On pages 11 through 14, you will find the budget adoption documents suggested by the Department of Wisconsin to meet Wisconsin state statute. This document lists revenue and expenditures for each fund and three years of data, which includes the 2012-13 audited numbers, 2013-14 un-audited numbers, and the proposed 2014-15 budget. Pages 11 and 12 reflect general fund revenues and expenditures, which is Fund 10. Page 13 reflects budgets for Fund 21, which is used for donations, Fund 27, which reports special education, and Fund 30, which includes our non-recommendable debt, and Fund 38 and recommendable debt in Fund 39. And also Fund 40, which reflects donations for capital projects. Page 14 reflects budgets for our food service fund, which is Fund 50, and our community services fund, which is Fund 80 that I just talked about. The increase in the general fund revenue is 0.06% for 2014-15, and the general fund expenditure increases 0.54%. Finally, the last page of the document, page 15, contains a history and an estimate for 2014-15 tax levy. Again, these numbers are based on the best estimates that we have at this time, and this budget uses the full revenue limit authority and is highlighted in gray at the bottom with the title "Budget Hearing." Once again, this budget, this is a budget that was approved in July. Approved in July, it reflects a tax levy increase of 1.96%, which is based on the equalization aid estimate received from DPI on July 1st, and no change in equalized valuation. So you can see, if you look at the gray section, budget hearing, the increase again is 1.96% on the $300,000 home. That would mean $59.57. Then there's three scenarios that are included. The yellow one increases the July aid estimate by $150,000, and that will change the tax rate increase to 1.25%. The second scenario, which is blue, increases the July aid estimate $150,000 and also increases the valuation 1%. That would reflect a tax rate change of 0.25%. And finally, scenario three shows no change in the July aid estimate and a 0.5% increase in valuation, or 1.45%. So you can see, right now, it shows 1.96%. It could be as low, and we're hoping as low as 0.25%. Does the board have any questions?
Can I also ask the members of the public too? Anyone have any questions to comment on?
Could you come up for the record and state your address?
Name, a wire, and give him a wire. 359 West, Bullan, Alamo Lane, Jefferson, Cedarburg School District. Just looking at, you started off with a $509,000 shortfall, and you came up with $299,000 surplus. Just from my own, since I've never studied DUC before. This is obviously a lot of hard work, but still a best guess, if I'm honest about yourself. In history, going back a couple of years, how close do you usually come to your budget?
In the last few years, we've been fairly close. This year, we added to fund balance, I believe, just $150,000.
So you're, as you said.
This past year, this past year.
You went over on.
Under, under $150,000.
Okay, thank you.
We've never gone over in the last, than I've gone in the last few years.
We have a form here. Anyone else? Anyone on the board? Again, you know that, like we always say, heavy lifting is done in the committee, so this has been gone over in detail, month after month. And Personal and Finance, I don't know, yeah, if anyone has any comments. Other than thanking everyone for their hard work.
I'd like to thank the administration here. You know, obviously, it's been a lot of, they put a lot of time and work into this. Karen, this comes up a different way to, I guess, practice toward this. So we understand it a little bit more about her, but thank you.
I'd like to add, the people in the audience who have this, are just aware that page 10 that you referenced, that shows, that's, you saw the $509,000 deficit that we started with. And each of those line items is, a lot of people, administrators and principals and things, going through their individual budgets, finding ways to make the savings, and sometimes adds. And then, but the end result, we gotta get it to zero. So for a dollar, you gotta take a dollar out somewhere else, and then actually find another $500,000 savings. So all of those line items individually are a lot of effort by the administration that we just see as a board, we'll say, work through those items. We don't do that heavy lifting that individuals in that school district do. And this is fantastic critical page to look at, you know, where they found saving to make it work. And then one comment on that last page, it's kind of in color at the bottom. Those are, this is kind of up to explain to people for the first time here. Karen has the gray, the budget hearing, that's the highest number right now, is 1.96%. Again, she makes a very conservative approach there. And each of the different scenarios is kind of highlighted at the bottom. What's estimated, because we have variables that we haven't found out from the state yet. So she estimates what she usually thinks might come from the state. And, you know, maybe you see those go lower and lower. But she, to her credit, generally, we start with the highest expectation. That's why we have some, you know, these savings each year. Because generally, the state will come with some sort of aid. Might not be the $150,000 number she estimated, but something. So that helps bring those numbers down. So it made it really, 1.96% increase to a one quarter of 1%. Somewhere in that range is kind of what you're saying. The best judgment, estimate is right down. Somewhere in that range, just to tell people, we don't see these all the time. And as a board, we see these at Personal Finance Committee, so that's why if somebody wanted a question, we already answered this a couple weeks ago, a month ago or so.
As soon as we're done, we'll start the next one. And, you know, we don't like our surprises. No one does up here, no one does up, you know, in the audience. And that's one thing that I'm actually sad to worry about, is being upfront and acting, and being conservative in allowing that move, so. They did a great job.
Mr. President? Yes. Just a quick comment. Like many of you in the audience, this was my first time through the Seaterburg School District budget process, and I didn't honestly know what to expect. So I started meeting with Karen, and at times, I'm sure I asked questions that she wondered why I wasn't even on the floor. My background, though, is in banking and financial services, so I've been through a lot of budget processes in the private sector over the years. And the one thing I can assure all of you is that the process that is being used here at Cedarburg is as good, if not in some respects, more exhaustive than what I saw many times in the private sector. So your tax dollars and the expenditures that are made on behalf of the students of our school district as stewards for you is really put through a exhaustive screw. And I can assure you, having now completed this process, that I am even more respectful of Karen and the rest of the administration for what they do for us each and every day. So with that, goodbye.
Very well said. Can I agree more? All right. Any other issues on the levy being presented from the board? Anyone else? We'll do this shortly in the meeting itself, which will begin in nine minutes. All right.
So we need a motion.
With that, we'll, I'll take a motion to adjourn. The budget hearing.
I'm hoping we close the budget hearing.
Second. A motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. We have about eight minutes until we will start the regular board. Thank you. Karen?
In the order of this regular meeting, the Cedarburg Board of Education, August 20th, 2014, at 7:30. This is a regular meeting of the board, and notices have been placed in the district, and additional copies have been forwarded to News Graphic and One Heave during the Sentinel. And first item of business is resolutions and recognitions. Mr. Kennedy?
Several great announcements to make this evening. First, congratulations to Jonathan Cedarburg as North Shore Conference Co-Player of the Year in Baseball. Congratulations again to Jonathan Cedarburg as All-Conference First Team pitcher, and Taylor Grimm as All-Conference First Team catcher. Congratulations to baseball's All-Conference Second Team, Ben Aldy, outfield, Michael Bonds, infield, and Drake Daniel, utility. Congratulations to Josh Moses as All-Conference Honorable Mention designated hitter. And there's a resolution this evening that's, I think regarding information that just got released today officially, where as the Cedarburg class of 2014 achieved the highest composite ACT score of 25.3, it's the highest score in school history. And where as the Cedarburg class of 2014 achieved the highest percentage of students tested, with 87%. And where as, out of 241 students that took the ACT, a school record of 58 achieved a 30 or higher and will be featured on our Academic Hall of Fame ACT 30-plus wall at the district entrance. And where as the outstanding ACT test results attained by Cedarburg students reflect the work that they have featured in history, is a complete team effort from kindergarten through 12th grade that allows us to celebrate the success of our students. Now therefore be resolved, the Cedarburg School Board of Education, on August 20th, 2014, is proud to congratulate the class of 2014, teachers, administrators, and parents in this extraordinary accomplishment. It is because of all your continued dedication to our students, that Cedarburg is recognized as a destination district. Signed, Cedarburg Board of Education.
I'd like to move that we approve the resolution. Can I just present? Second. I have a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries unanimously. All right. If I show hands, is there anyone that would like to, from the public, that would like to make comments tonight? Anyone at all? Okay, I'm going to read a disclaimer.
In the past, the State Attorney General issued guidance on how governmental bodies such as school boards should conduct the public comment portions of their meetings. This guidance was given to assist the governmental bodies in avoiding violation of the state's open meetings laws. The essence of the guidance is that unless the topic being brought to the board by the public is listed on that meeting's agenda, no significant discussion can be held on that item. Instead, the topic may be listed as an item on a future meeting agenda whereby discussion could then be held. The reason for this guidance is not to limit open discussion, but rather to ensure that all interested parties have equal opportunities to participate in the discussion with the full school board. We of the school board encourage community input, and we want to hear from you, our constituents. However, we also take the state's open meeting laws seriously and will follow the guidance as outlined by the State Attorney General. Therefore, if an item is listed on tonight's agenda, open dialogue may occur between the individual from the public and the board members. If it is not listed, the board will be limited to listening only and will not be able to respond to comments or questions. If your item is not listed on tonight's agenda and you want to have a discussion regarding the topic, you are encouraged to contact the district superintendent and request that your item be listed on a future meeting agenda. As always, you are also encouraged to discuss any issue with individual board members on a one-on-one basis outside of the meeting setting. Please make your comments to the board and not to any individuals in the audience. Please note that this is a public meeting, and we ask everyone to address one another with courtesy and the respect that you would like to receive in return. When you approach the microphone, please get your name and address for the record. And additionally, the meeting is being recorded and will be put on YouTube. And the first public portion comment will be by Dr. Lamerson because of the late notice of the good news that Mr. Kennedy just spoke about.
I asked Todd if he would please share with the board and the audience some of the detailed breakdown a little bit on the wonderful news regarding the ACT report. It wasn't bargained until today.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Lamerson. It's exciting news for us to celebrate the achievement of high school. It's nice, some high school staff is here this evening, TAPs and principal. And we've looked over the data, and we're excited to show that over the last six years, our data is trending in the correct direction, which is upward. Some significant improvements this year, certainly in subgroups. They've all, the vast majority of subgroups have increased, which is outstanding. When you look at the actual test areas, English, math, reading, and science, all of those have increased significantly. I should say significantly have increased, but the most significant increase is happening in English and science. And when you look at the percentage of students who met college and readiness benchmarks, our students continue to excel in that area with 95% reading that benchmark in English, 60-70% in reading that in mathematics, and 70% in reading, and 71% in science. So it was a great deal for us to celebrate. And I'll say, this just doesn't happen by accident. These scores happen based on the hard work of our students, our teachers, the leadership of high school, and certainly exceeding the state expectations and standards. That's what the board has asked us to do, and that's what we continue to do at the elementary and middle and high school. So I'm very pleased with the scores on our job from the staff. Are we on this, please?
Thank you. So from the public, will anyone like to come down and address the board?
My name is Karen Walker. My address is 1484 Hudson Lane in the Thomas Cedarburg. I have come to you tonight to talk to you about a situation that's been happening to me since June, when I was told that my kids couldn't afford time to school that they've been spending since my oldest was in kindergarten, which is 2006. I have pictures of my two kids, and I would like for a group of gentlemen to be able to see, and ladies, who these kids are that are having decisions made all of them. Aubrey's my youngest, and she'll be in second grade. And my middle child is almost 11, and she'll be in fifth grade, which is her last year at Westlon Elementary School. Being that picture that you see of her going to the father daughter dance will be the last one she gets, because that was fourth grade last year. We lived within the city of Cedarburg and attended Westlon, I said, in 2006, when my first daughter was in kindergarten. We continued on until just this past July, when we, actually, probably it was March or April, when we decided we needed to upgrade to a larger house for our family. Just, everybody does this. You want to grow, and you want to grow. does this. You want to grow and you want to make things better for your family. So we set up a affordable home. We found one. However, it was in the town of Cedarburg. So my first job was then to find out whether my kids could continue at Westlon, which I believe is the right place for them, which I believe is their home for schooling. We did not move to our home. We did not sign papers and contracts until I knew that my children's safety and space at Westlon was secure. At that point, I felt confident to go ahead with our move. I felt confident to go ahead and move out to the town because I was told by our principal and by our superintendent that yes, it's okay for you to continue. I went back to Dr. Sanders in April the following year, two thousand fourteen to the past year, and said to him, do I need to reissue this request every single year? He said, no, you do not. Dr. Eric and I have spoken. If you want to stay and I want you to stay, then we stay. That's what it is. I took his word for it. I took the word of the district for that. And we went on our vacation and had a great time and came home to find a letter in our mailbox dated, and I can't remember exactly, either June fourteenth or June eighteenth, stating that my children could no longer attend Westlon Elementary. I apologize. Sorry. I was extremely angry. I was furious. I called everybody I could think of to see how to fix this. Dr. Sanders had no idea that these letters were sent out. He did everything that he could. And I spoke with a member of the school district who basically alluded to the fact that he's dealt with a lot of people playing games with the district. And I can assume that you can understand how that probably hit me at the time. Not favorable in my viewpoint. I was not playing games. I specifically purchased our home in fully, fully believing and knowing that my kids could stay where they were supposed to be, which I believed was Westlon. So games were not being played. I then, during the meantime, I said to him, do I need to reissue my letter? Well, that's an option that you have. You may reissue your letter, and we will discuss it again at the district to find out what to do with you. So again, I rewrote my letter. I stated that I wanted my children to go there. I wanted them to complete their elementary education at Westlon, and that's how I left it. Between June and August, I heard basically nothing, and I received online registration information for my kids. So as every parent does, they go right on and they start doing all of the stuff you need to do to register your kids. I opened up Skyward, and the first thing I see is Ellie Walker, Westlon Elementary, two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. So I thought, wow, did this just really fix itself without getting a letter, without anything? So I went ahead and did the registration with my school shopping. We have done everything to prepare, and then last week, Wednesday, I received another letter saying once again, your children may no longer attend Westlon. I was floored. I mean, I haven't slept. I sleep in my seven-year-old's bed because she is upset and doesn't want to leave for school. My fifth grader, I, I, you, many of you probably have children, and I can't imagine that you think it's in the best interest of my child to be ripped out of the school that she's only known since she was in kindergarten, away from all of her friends she's known since she was five, and to now have to go to another school for one year with no one that she knows. I don't see how that's in the best interest of my child at all. So I guess what I'm here to ask is that an exception be made for my children, for my family, because I think it's in the best interest of my kids. I don't think policy was handled correctly. I think that the policy of the board states that I was to be told that my kids could not attend that school by the first Monday in June. That did not happen. It was the second week in June, the fourteenth to the eighteenth, which says to me, the first of Monday of June was completely passed. Whether it was the fourteenth or the eighteenth, that's here or there, the first Monday of June had passed, and I had not heard anything. So if policy's made, policy should be followed. I think my kids are a victim of the policy not being followed. And I understand that this leads to a bigger problem, which is class size. I know that the classes are gigantic in fourth and fifth grade at Westlon. I get it, but that has been a problem for over a year, and nothing has been done. No teacher has been hired. Nobody has said, we've got to take care of this. There are seven houses at least for sale at Cedarburg Point. What are you going to do if a family moves in and they have fifth graders, every single one of them? That's ten fifth graders. I mean, what's going to happen then? They have to go someplace else? No, that's not fair. But they're overcrowded and the class sizes are too big, even without my child there. Their overcapacity that you have set as a guideline of twenty, up to twenty-eight. One class is at twenty-nine, one class is at twenty-eight. Does that not say that you need another teacher to make it right for these kids? If the best interest of the kids is what we're actually after, then those class sizes are staggering. They are way too, way too big. No one can learn in an environment like that. I was a teacher. I feel like I have a little bit of background with this. So I come to you as a parent, asking for an exception to be made, and that's all I can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heidi. I'm Sarah Gomc. I've spoken with a couple of you off meeting.
I'm sorry, sir, before you start, you just.
I'm from Milwaukee. June, so make eleven, seven, three, five, seven, North Bow Avenue, Milwaukee, five, three, two, two, four.
Thanks.
I've spoken with a couple of you on and off meeting record and at your homes and, I mean, I didn't come to your home, but I spoke with you, and I greatly appreciate the time that you've taken with me and spent trying to explain things to me. And I felt the need to come to this meeting, so I knew as a parent that I've done every single thing I can to keep my child at Westlon School. I feel like if I didn't come, because I don't like to spend my Wednesday nights at meetings, but I feel like if I didn't come, I haven't done everything for my child. As a parent, you can see, and that's what we do, we try and try for our kids. So I am here because we received a letter just five days ago that my son, Jack, would need to be moved to a different elementary school. Jack was very lucky and got accepted into the open enrollment program last year, allowing him to attend Westlon Elementary for kindergarten. I just want to tell you a little bit about my son, Jack. He's six years old and has big dreams for himself. I understand that all kids experience anxiety and all kids are nervous to get a new school. The Jack's behavior was not typical of a normal kindergartner. He cried and cried every morning for the first three months of school. There was no reasoning with him to get dressed in the morning, and I would have to chase him around every morning to get him dressed. He's sometimes emailing his teacher to say and warn her what I would be bringing to school. Jack has an anxiety problem. His brain continues to worry and won't let it calm himself down. He stews and stews about things that could happen the next day at school. And more troubling is that he obsesses about not wanting to go to school while at home every night and all week and long. He does not eat well or sleep well, waking up several times at night worrying about the next, what the next day will bring. I felt like he was placed with an angel of a teacher, Mrs. Shepherd. She was extremely patient with Jack and would peel him off of me every single morning for the first three months. She came up with little behavior charts to help him transition. She had also enlisted our neighbor friend, Tate Goldbeck, to help sit with Jack during the school assemblies every morning. It wasn't until November that Jack finally adjusted and no more crying occurred. He had made friends and learned the ropes at Westlon. Jack has a lot of things to overcome. He is only as tall as an average four-year-old and also has a peanut allergy. He has had kids comment that he is a baby because of his height, and he has learned to ignore the mean ones. He has to sit at a separate table at lunch because of his allergy. I'm asking you to put yourself in Jack's shoes for a moment or pretend he is your child. How would you feel? We live in Milwaukee. We try to do things with friends over the summer here in Cedarburg, but because of the drive-up we do all year round, we find ourselves signing up for activities, activities closer to our house. Therefore, my son has no friends from soccer or T-ball or football here in Cedarburg. The only kids he knows are the ones he has met at Westlon. And now we receive this letter telling us he won't be single this year? How am I supposed to tell him this? This decision will affect my son in an idiotic way. I will be dealing with the anxiety issues all over again, and Jack will be stressed to adjust and make new friends. I wouldn't be here if my son could make normal adjustments to new things, but he can't. In order for a child to learn, he must feel confident, comfortable, and at ease in his environment. My son will not be. To tell a child just two weeks before school starts that he won't see his friends is just not fair. I am begging you to please reconsider this decision, which was based on a list and not Jack as an individual child. Please allow him to remain at Westlon. In checking on class sizes, I was informed that Westlon has twenty-three students in Mrs. Bay's class. That was going to be Jack's teacher. I know that for a fact. And twenty-four students in Mrs. Neat's class. It seems to us that there could be an additional student in Mrs. Bay's class. If that spot remains unfilled, would it be possible to have Jack back at Westlon? I can't seem to wrap my mind around the logic of this decision. Why does the school Jack is to be moved to, Perkview, has twenty-two students in each of its three classrooms already, but Jack and other students still enrolling in first grade aren't even included in his numbers yet, meaning they'll go up, which is what we have at Westlon? We as parents are prepared to do whatever is necessary to help Jack. We built our home four years ago. It's our dream home. We've been prepared to move to Cedarburg, just not this fast. We are prepared today to sell our home and move to the Westlon area by next summer to keep Jack in school there. If we could just have one more year at Westlon, I am listing my house this winter, and we're moving. At the time that Jack was enrolled in Cedarburg Schools, we had residency requirement by the city of Milwaukee. That requirement has since been lifted, and we are prepared to move in an effort to keep Jack in the school that he has excelled in. We are committed to the Westlon and the community. We have volunteered many classroom hours. Even my husband came and made gingerbread houses this, this year. We love the school. We participate in Westlon events, and we want to be here. We want Jack to stay at Westlon Elementary. I am calling upon the board to please reconsider their open enrollment policy and keep Jack at Westlon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to give support? Anyone at all on any topic?
Good evening. I'm Dr. Parker. I'm in the building, fourth, eighteen, W fifty-three, fifty-three, forty-five, true story. And my question, just to address to the board, is a potential agenda topic for the next meeting is the replacement of Joe Cook, whom I just ordered at six p.m. this evening at kindergarten occupation yesterday, to join the assistant steward and the watch of the school district. I have a special interest with my daughter, really special reason. We work really close with Joe in terms of a lot of the help that he helped facilitate for our family, for my daughter Stella. So I'm just curious to learn more if there's a conversation or discussion or any involvement that, you know, the parents, the children that worked with Joe the past year, if there's any potential for involvement or conversation or discussion around what does that look like? I know it's kind of late notice in terms of why you gave that. The timing is not a good of these things, but if that opportunity exists, I want to, you know, just learn more about that. Thank you.
Sir, we can, we can talk about it right now.
Sure.
Because it is on the agenda under determines.
Maybe something is. Yeah, that's something we can talk about. Great question. Thanks for, thanks for offering support. Our plan right now, and I'm very pleased that, is post position. I have this online currently, or I have to see, the, I have the board accept the resignation. Our goal is to do our best to find a high-quality candidate. We are folks that already know about the resignation and the meeting quarter event. So our goal is to do our best to, to find a quality candidate and see if we could work acceptable arrangements with, with their current school district. In the meantime, we have, we are looking at different role responsibilities because as I was going, I was tomorrow on, or today, he was not here. So we're going into the school year, doing our best to be able to cover those roles until we can complete that selection process. And that's our hopeful goal at the current time. So if everything works well, sometime next month, at next month's board meeting, we'll be able to talk to the board about high-quality candidates that simply is, you know, we're working with that post district at Lockchuck, trying to work with us at Lockchuck in June, twenty fifteen, and see if we're able to work with them for them. But to work out the situation that they would be able to address their needs as well. So that's our, that's our goal. That's our plan, and in the forward, after the board accepts the resignation. So thank you so much for offering your help and support.
Simply in these situations, if you can't meet your goal, what have you done in the past or?
We're already looking at, you know, what the rest of this year could look like because our board is absolutely committed that we will find and select the highest-quality candidate. This board does not settle for candidates just to fill positions. So the expectation is that we will find the highest-quality candidate who will fit within our structure and our family and our expectations and our culture, and will add value to that. If we don't do that, then we have another plan that we will put in place for the rest of this year utilizing leadership within our current, current teaching ranks and staff who are absolutely phenomenal. So they'd be familiar with processes. They'd be familiar with situations, and we sort of provide as much as possible to them. So that's, that's, you know, our plan at this particular point in time. The, the expectation and the goal that we have in the trailer is that we will not bring a candidate to you unless it is the best candidate long-term for our case. And as an absolute commitment, we will fulfill that commitment, assuming that we have, you know, good selection of candidates to be able to, to screen and to improve the selection process.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address the board? Any subject? Anything else? All right. Thank you, everyone. And we will move on to the agenda, Dr. Lamerson.
The incentive agenda items, special board meeting, have a minutes of July eighth, regular board meeting minutes of July sixteenth. The budget finance, financial documents as included. The budget finance, financial documents as included in the package. At this time, I would like to ask Conrad if he would, which is a practice of board for the administration to read the entire personnel report. It is three pages. So if anyone would like to get up and stretch the board before we start meeting, this would be the time. It's been a very active summer, both in the exiting of staff, potentially classified staff in terms of care professionals, and also hiring process. Conrad, if you'd like to lead the board, please.
Sure, some items are really just internal transfers that don't necessarily require approval, or some are classified employees who have left that don't have contracts to approve or resignations. But I'll just identify all the changes and then the things that need approval will fit under that umbrella. Under retirement and resignations for our professional staff, we have the Joe Cook resignation, Kayla Anderson, Shannon Conan, Jeffrey Martin, Allison Mike, Diane Stotza, and David Teis. Those are all teachers or administrators, just some of their resignations over the summer. Classified employees who either resigned or retired, Kelly Marlowe, Barbara Burke, Lisa Clark, Gina Collins, Janet Como, Sue Gendrich, Sarah Brim, Patricia Dijkstra, Gina Hall, Krista Claus, Patty Marsh, Jacqueline McFadden, Marion Nguyenhaus, Kathy Shennick, Mark Reenstoll, Jenny Chamleison, Anne Thomas, and Margaret E. Some transfers and changes that we made among our professional staff. Paul Nolte will be transferring from a teaching position to a library media position across the district. Dave Pentic will be doing one-year special assignment as athletic director. Krista Hackett will be moving from the accounting clerk to the district accountant. And employment contracts that we've been engaging with since the last board meeting for our professional staff include a one-year full-time contract for Amy Bakdel. I'm sure you say full-time, that's forty-five percent Westlon, Title I math. Part-time contract for Marissa Beckman for one-seventy band teacher at Webster. Full-time educator contract for Katie DeBauw, second-grade teacher at Westlon. Full-time educator contract for Teresa Sykret, fourth grade at Parkview. Part-time contract for Corinne Garner, forty-nine percent art position at the high school. Full-time educator contract for Kevin Purwin, type A teacher at the high school. Part-time contract for Christina King, math teacher at the high school. Part-time contract for Nancy Curtin, one-four-five, Title I reading at Westlon. Part-time educator contract for Marissa Mitchell, one-six-seven music at Webster. Full-time educator contract for Ashton Oldenhauer for fifth-grade teacher at Parkview. Full-time educator contract for Elizabeth Thaddix, speech and language pathologist at high school. Full-time educator contract for Abigail Schwanz, fourth-grade teacher at Thorson. Move to prove part-time educator contract Kristen Sawak and Butler, fifty percent reading teacher at Westlon. And a full-time educator contract for Julie Sorensen, English teacher at the high school. Classified staff that we've added, Richard Blair, care professional at the high school. Rita Bose, care professional at the high school. Nanita Booth, writing center agent at the high school. Rebecca Diamond, job coach, professional at the high, care professional at the high school. Rachel Hens, district-wide nurse. Linda Klink, athletic activities secretary at the high school. And Robert Carpenter, transferred from part-time to full-time lieutenant secretary at the high school. So for those contracts that were included in that long list, we would ask for your approval.
I would approve with the change that you identified, to clarify the point five position in item three, A1 for Amy Bakdel.
And it's meant to be to part-time educator, correct?
Yes.
Have motion?
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries. Thank you for all the work and all these hires.
Been a busy hiring season. We were five teachers left to be fully set. We had a couple real late and hard-to-find positions, but we're tracking down leads on all of them. I think we'll be fully set very close to the start of school, definitely that first week.
Excellent. All right, new course and recommendations, Dr. Lammers.
First item is recommendation and coordination that you accept the donation of two attendance fee salaries, your faculty salaries, which are devised. They use by the athletic program, the sports, Cedarburg High School's sports programs, the names of the donors who have called at their request.
Will approval?
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Against. Motion carries.
Recommend that board education, sub Cedarburg Education Foundation's grant donations, totally nine thousand, twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. Grant plus approved include three thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents for Apple iPads and Webster's Department. Three thousand dollars for Westlon Elementary School for Books, for literacy, for library book room. And twenty-five hundred dollars for CHS Ban for Brazilian, African drums, and percussion. Will approval?
Will approval?
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The next donation, recommend the board accept twenty-five hundred dollar donation from the Ameri Family Foundation to be used by their athletic department at the high school.
Will approval?
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries.
The last donation presented to you this evening is to recommend accepting one thousand dollar donation from Ameri Family Foundation to be used by Cedarburg High School for use in the one-hundred eighty degree program.
Will approval?
Second.
Motion second, all is in favor.
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Looking at item E, High School Resource Period Update.
Thank you. This evening, we have a high school team here to make a presentation on the resource period. It's an update, it's a continuation of our conversation on school scheduling that started well over a year, around probably eighteen months ago. Dr. Reddick, which is a scheduling guru, is here presenting to the board on May sixth, and he is back in the district on the twenty-seventh. He should a few days to work for the middle school elementary. This evening, we have Jeff Nelson, high school principal, assistant principals, and other teachers here to make a presentation on the resource period. And I'll say Jeff has been here transparent and deliberate in this process over the last several months. I had an opportunity to attend one of his presentations with his parents in his very room and have received the presentation. And this is just a natural evolution of school scheduling conversation. When you read the resolution this evening on the basic key scores, we want to continue those ways of improving and celebrating our success. And that happens through continuous improvement. And that only occurs when we are analyzing and looking at all the opportunities that we have to offer our students and continue to maximize those opportunities. So tonight, Jeff's here to present the problem on the resource period.
Yeah, there's a show there. Unfreeze.
Unmute.
Unmute. Thank you. And we do have a number of people that are here on our team, and at the end, we'll bring them down to tell us some questions and so forth. We have General Neal, who's our PTO co-president, who's here as a parent. Jeff Delmeyer is one of our social studies teachers. Kyle Sondergaard is our RIS teacher. Lynn Factor is one of our math teachers. Bobby O'Neill is one of our stellar sophomore students. Pat Sorensen is our school psychologist and soccer coach, running secretary. Julie Yackles, one of our associate principals, and Callie Nyerider is also one of our associate principals. So at the end, we'll have them down to answer any questions you may have. You do have a packet in your, you have a PowerPoint in your packet that sort of goes through some of these things. And we'll try and go through these, the process for you that we've been following at the high school. So starting back in two thousand and twelve, October two thousand and twelve, last school year, two years ago, we started a committee of teachers who volunteered to be part of an after-school meeting with RTI. RTI's Response to Intervention. And we hear a lot about RTI and different tiers, where we have tier one, tier two, and tier three. And a lot of times, we think of RTI's being, perception would be that it's for students who struggle, but it's actually for all of our kids. You know, as Scott said earlier, you don't get great scores by accident. And so we have schools that are focusing on our struggling students, our students that are in the middle, and then our top students as well. And how can we push all of those kids at the same time? So we started meeting, we really, we're trying to figure out what this committee's going to look like, what we're going to do at this committee. So we've got bi-monthly after-school to look at student learning, set benchmarks for students that weren't meeting standards, and what can we do for those kids? Then the ASCD, which is Association of Supervision Curriculum and Development, the national conference held in Chicago. And so we actually had nine teachers and three administrators. It's very rare you get to go to a national conference, and it's in Chicago like once every seven years. So we were able to go and hear some national speakers. One of the speakers happened to be Mike Reddick, who is a guru on scheduling, and we heard him talk about some ideas there. Came back with those ideas presented to our staff that we heard. And then that April meeting, our committee determined the need for intervention time period for students. We started calling it intervention time because we really were looking at it as like, how can we help our struggling students? And as we moved into this year, we, we met again in October, we started in October, and we met in November, and we surveyed our staff regarding the resource period. And between last April and November, we determined the intervention period wasn't really what we're looking for because that really sort of signifies you're really trying to help struggling students. And really, we wanted our resource, our time to be for all of our kids. And so we came up with the idea of the resource period. And so we've been calling it that ever since then. So we surveyed our staff, explained what that looked like in other schools, how many times would they want to have it, what are some ideas we could do with that, and so forth. Came back together in December and had a discussion about that and discussed our next steps. And then in January, we added some students and some parents. So we knew now we're, we stopped talking about individual students, we stopped talking about benchmarks, we started talking about what could this look like at the high school? And so realizing that we're going to be talking about our whole student body, we decided let's add some students and some parents. So how do you add people to your committee without making it seem like, you know, they're your best friends? We looked at people that were already in leadership roles. So for our students, we added our president and vice president of the freshman class, which is Kevin Blomsky and Bobby O'Neill. And then our president and vice president of the sophomore class, which is Alex and Zach Osterman. And then we looked at what are the parent organizations, parent organizations we have available that work in our school? And we really have three at the high school that I think of that are our main organizations. We have our PTO, we have our fine arts boosters, and we have our athletic boosters. Since this is really an academic piece, that we chose the PTO and we chose our fine arts boosters. Amy McGonaghy and General Neal are the co-presidents of the PTO, and Duane Charrington is our president of the fine arts boosters. And so all of these, so then we started, all these people then started attending, we already had our teachers that were on the side. And then we started having our parents and our students, and then the administration that was represented as well, start attending our meetings. We also, we created a Google Doc that everyone had access to, so every time we had a meeting, anyone could access those things through one of our curriculum committee of the boards. Mr. Preer and Mr. Leach had asked, potentially they would be joining us, so they were added to our Google Doc as well. So very transparent with, with things that we were doing. Students could add things to it, parents, teachers, administration, whatever we want to add in that sense as we move forward. So we continued meeting. So we met in February as a group, we met in March. In April, we went on site visits. So we went to see three different high schools and what a resource period would look like at those high schools. We went to Franklin High School, went to Wachshau West, and went to Port Washington High School. We chose those three high schools because they had all, within the last three years, added a resource period or intervention time or some type of scheduling change to help students. Franklin had theirs in the morning before school, Wachshau West had theirs in the morning before school, Port Washington had theirs at the end of the day. So we knew we were going to be able to see two out of the three. So we saw Franklin, so we met here at the school at six o'clock in the morning. We had our four students, our three parents, and I think six teachers and three, and two administrative, one administrator going on, on that trip. We met here at six, we left here at six o'clock in the morning, we got back at about three-thirty, and then we deliberated until about five o'clock that night. So a lot of, these other meetings were like forty-five minutes to an hour. That was a full day. We saw Franklin High School's resource period in action. We just, and then once you were done, then we had a group of teachers meet with their group of teachers and talk about what they liked about it, what they would change if they could go over again. Our group of students along with Cap Sorensen met with their group of students. And then we had, administrators could meet with their administrative team as well. So we were able to do that. Then we went to Wachshau West because we'd missed their time that morning. Students just met with students, teachers met with teachers, and I met with their administrative team. Port Washington, we were able to meet beforehand with their teachers. Teachers know teachers again, students know students again, and then we were able to see their resource period in action. So it was an interesting thing to see three different schools, to hear, see two schools, hear three different schools, how they're doing it, and some of the ideas that they had and the reasons that they were having it. And we came away with some ideas of what we wanted to do, but I came with more ideas of what we didn't want to do. It was really helpful for us to see our culture and what we wanted to move forward from our end. And then in May, we had Michael Reddick, and as I mentioned, we had seen him at ASCD. He came and presented to our team on resource periods and scheduling. We had five schedule options emerged with resource added to each. And then we came back together on the thirteenth. And at the end of our time on the sixth, we'd been meeting with him all day, and he's in, you know, he's really good with scheduling, but he's also really, really good with Excel. And so your brain sort of hurts at the end of the time. We could not move off of five. On the thirteenth, we came back together, came to consensus on two options within probably ten minutes. Just having some time to marinate, think over those things really gave us some, some good opportunities to come to a quick consensus on that. We then went to our entire staff on May twenty-ninth and did a resource brainstorming discussion on that. We met as a team on the sixth to discuss that. We then had a presentation to our teachers that we had parents and students at as well, along with our teachers. And then our teachers voted on the two scheduling options that our group was recommending in that sense. We then, on July twenty-first, at seven o'clock, and August fifth, had two listening sessions. There's a Google Doc that we added, so parents that were in attendance or parents who couldn't attend but wanted to ask questions could have. It's on your handout, it's, we didn't figure out until later that it's actually case-sensitive, so that's why it's been added here, so it's capitalized on the handout for some reason. But if, so you can even go there and look to see questions that parents asked, either in the session or when asked online after they were done, and give us some good feedback in that sense. The statement that we used at the beginning of the year on, on our top of our Google Doc was this statement from Reddick. It was, you know, ironic that we ended up bringing him in because we didn't know that when we started in the fall. That we should strive for a school schedule that is flexible enough to provide more learning time for students who need it and more choices for those who don't need more learning time. So if we know that, I think it's fifty-eight students, got thirty or higher in the ACT, those students probably don't need more learning time. But they do need, but they need, they need some choices for what, what they would do, that would be beneficial for them and could maybe take some stress and, and help them in that sense. So why resource? There's a number of things that are, that we've put up here that go along with why. You know, we know that no matter how well students do that, connecting with a teacher is a very difficult thing. You know, as students get ill, whether they're our top students, whether they're a struggling student, whether they're a middle student, it's hard to make up that misswork. And so having extended learning time, having opportunities to see teachers. Right now, we do a lot of things that require us to pull kids out of class. So I know for sure on Friday, the fifth of September, first, I think second hour will be with seniors, our full seniors out of the second hour class will be with them for a class meeting. I mean, with juniors, third hour, and then after lunch, we'll meet with sophomores, and then after that, we'll meet with freshmen. So we'll spend four hours, and those kids all miss that class, whether it's English class, or the math class, social class, bio class, we don't really care. We just need to meet with you. If you get off the school, you're on the right note, so we use it for that sense. We also, the academic and career plan development, this is something that we're going to hear more of as we want to see students develop an academic and career plan, leave high school with a plan in place. The way those things happen now is through counseling. Counselors bring kids in out of their English classes, or being with English class, or social studies classes. We do, you know, surveys, the pride survey, those are all things that take away classroom instruction time. We want kids to sign up for AP exams, they have to come out of their class or in a study hall, not all kids have a study hall, and so forth. We don't have a mentoring program for incoming freshmen. That's probably one of the things that, that, you know, we're very fortunate to have some very mature students coming in. But at the same time, we have a number of kids who aren't as mature, and, and we want to raise the bar for all of our kids. So having a mentoring program for upperclassmen to mentor freshmen, resource would be an opportunity for them to talk about students about, this is what it's like at Cedarburg High School. This is our expectations, homecoming's coming up, this is what we get with homecoming, final exams are coming up. I wish I had done this as a freshman. You know, we have students who are in our one-eight club as senior, as juniors, it would be great representatives for this, helping kids make better choices and so forth, and would have built-in time for that. Physical systems, sort of something that's going to be a bigger deal, making that connection with at least one adult in our building with a homeroom opportunity, and then enriching opportunities. One of the schools that, Mr. Reddick really uses an example is Wasenica, Wasenica right there, Wasenica. And they did a video for their students when they started looking at, they have a schedule.
All of the schedules, around eleven o'clock. Not too bad, right? So at this point, you're probably wondering, what's IE period? IE stands for Intervention Enrichment. It's a great time to sign up for classes and activities that wouldn't normally fit in your schedule. So that raises a question, what would you like to do during IE?
I want to learn to play Chinese checkers.
Preparing for the zombie apocalypse?
Cake decorating?
Stick collecting?
Cartoon?
Cooking, he says, that's awesome.
For games?
I would love to do some video photography, and I'd probably like something like medicine, like doctors, and stuff.
Literature?
Movie reviews?
Dancing?
Singing lessons?
All of those activities and more will be available. Oh, and for all of those who just answered with homework. Oh, and for all of those who just answered with homework?
Study hall?
Homework?
Homework?
I would probably get more help from teachers?
Homework?
Homework?
Getting help from my teachers?
Don't worry, there'll be plenty of opportunities to get extra help and do work through teacher's office hours and remediation. Here's some of the categories. Art. Skills and notes. Music. Math. Exercise and help. Reading, writing. Social studies. Science. And world language. There are also tons of other fun activities to do. Here's a list of just some of the others.
First is handwriting methods, special event preparations, subject strategy, logic games, cake decorating, finance jobs, math, chess, express yourself, juggling, sports intensity, stamp collecting, kinesiology, NHP careers, wanna play in college, college athletic, the NCAA and recruiting, Bible fellowship, trivia board games, quiz app, crafting, fantasy world, write a novel, parenting the zombie apocalypse, teaching life lessons, zombie problems, The Simpsons, trivia, learning through game, car club, math, youth group, arts and crafts, science and running, cookie decorating, AP exam review, fact check dot org, sushi making, New Year's cards, anime, magazines, the world of fashion and design blogs, holiday help, wrapping the perfect package, creating a comic book based on history, professional mastery class presentation, craft project meetings, brainstorming, craft projects, support Jewish best friend, AP seminar, gap prep, council meetings. All right, that's it. We didn't offer all those at the same time. But there, but it shows you the wide range of things. And we've had discussions, Jeff Delmeyer said, you know, leading up, one of the things I wrote was AP review. You think of like, leading up to AP review, kids are coming in, he's doing a Saturday training in this room here to get kids to come in and you could do that in the morning before school begins. We have a number of kids who come in and work out at six fifteen in the morning for training and they, they would not, they would, they would be able to, they'll do that in a different time instead of having to try and figure out. Cause after school, there's a lot of things going on and so. So, so, so we talked about resource a lot. We started looking at resource, started looking at our schedule. We came up with our non-negotiables. We discussed like, one of those things that we all, that we just are, that as a committee, we all feel very strongly about. We work with our staff on as well. Students need eight choices. So that was one of the non-negotiables. So why did we go to Franklin High School, Waukesha West and Port Washington? Why didn't we go to other North Shore schools? Why didn't we go to other schools you would think of that maybe have our billionists that we could pair ourselves to? Because some of those other schools don't, they don't run eight classes. They only have eight choices. So for example, Alton City doesn't have eight choices. They have, they have fifteen choices. We have sixteen because they have the trimester. So we didn't go there. Whitefish Bay has seven class, they have seven period day. Greendale, Steve Lozis is a parent in our district, know him well, they just started resource, but they offer a seven period day. So we intentionally didn't go look at schools that didn't offer eight classes because we didn't want our message to be, we're really committed to eight classes. But then we went and saw this school and they didn't operate. And then people would think, oh, well, they're saying that, they really mean that. We're trying to be as transparent as possible and, and really make sure we are intentional of what we did. We also wanted to say, resource should benefit all kids, not just our top kids, not just our struggling kids, all kids. We should have interventions though for students who need it. And then consensus will be used through our committee forward. So everyone had an equal voice, everyone had an equal vote. We didn't often love it, but we all had to live with it and there was some compromise along the way. Do other schools have resource? We looked at forty Milwaukee area schools, twenty-nine have some type of resource period. You can see looking at ACT scores, doesn't really affect that. Eleven utilized block schedules out of those forty-nine use eight periods, sixteen use seven periods. And then the other twenty-three, six, the other four utilize a different type of schedule altogether in that sense. So we're really looking at this as like, we need to raise our ACT scores because ACT scores are trending in the right direction. But we do see it as a way to improve our, our overall culture and helping our kids, which I think with the revenue we have will, will increase ACT scores as well. Well, so why, so why did we just schedule a break, why isn't this resource period? Because as you, as Reddick, when he met with us, he immediately said, well, schools that offer eight, eight options, move to the block to keep students. That, that is, it's, and in your community, it makes sense. People already want eight options, seven won't be enough, where you move to A B, you look at the block. So then he looked at five, we looked at five different schedule options. One of those options was our current schedule, our drop schedule. The other four were different versions of block schedules with, with that. But when we add resource to our current schedule, it shortens it significantly. And the staff still feels strongly about adding resource. So we come to what we looked at as, as a staff of being our, our top choice. We have a current schedule with Thursday late start. So we have, I mean, set up up here, current schedule Thursday late start. Over here, eight A B, four days resource and one day late start. Shows current minutes, resource minute, and then aggregate instruction. So on the current schedule, the class needs one hundred and twenty-one point five and then thirty-six times on a Thursday. It doesn't add up to one hundred and eighty because we dropped the class. So, so the classes keep getting dropped. Dropped up here on a Thursday, it's only forty-seven minutes. On a regular day, it's fifty-two minutes. So total minutes is eight thousand and ten minutes. The proposal is, the, the, that the staff voted on was that we would have an eight A B. We would run four class periods a day. So on A schedule, you'd have A one, A two, A three, A four. The next day you'd have B one, two, three, four. Next day, A one, two, three, four, B one, two, three, four, all the way through. So you really only, so you meet ninety times. So you meet ninety times as, as a class. We, and I'll have a screen that will show you the next thing. But it's four days resource, we'd stay with our late, one day late start. We currently have Thursday late start. That's for collaboration. That's only, teach, students are not allowed to get teacher help during that day. That's the only time we have at the high school for teachers to talk to each other in their departments. If they're lucky enough to have the same prep, have lunch, then they may talk to each other about curriculum things. But we have one time a week that they can really work on curriculum issues. And, and I would say, in my five years, the best thing we've done at the high school is add collaborative time. I, I, if we did not have collaborative time, we, you would not be reading that proclamation. You would not, we would not be seeing the results that we're getting with our kids. Collaboration has been the number one best thing that we've done as a school. So we're, we want to, we feel strongly we want to keep that. But the other four days would be resource. So that suits, so then students would be ninety minutes a day, ninety times a year. There's eighty-five minutes a day we meet. So in the total minutes, it's actually a minus six hours of instruction. When we think of like that over the year, I think it's like a minute and a half a day or three minutes a day or two minutes, it's in that ballpark a day that you're losing in that sense. But when we add a resource time, it means we meet one hundred and forty-four times at forty minutes, we're actually adding an instruction of forty-eight hours. So we're adding forty-eight hours of contact time with students by going to this schedule. And logically it makes sense because you're not, we don't have seven classes a day. You're not, every, every time we have a class period, you have five minute passing time. Right? So, so we know that we, by eliminating that, dropping it to four, you're immediately eliminating passing time for three classes. And that, that's gaining you instructional time throughout the year. And that's where we, so we really see the benefit of having that more contact time with staff, with students. So our student schedule example, you'd see A day, it could be math, science, world language, could be a study hall, fine arts or study hall, English, biology, social studies, allied arts or study hall. We had a lot of discussion about this. There's some schools that have gone to the eight period and have said students cannot have study halls. We, we had a lot of discussion about that. It did not feel like that was appropriate, but we did, so we, we settled on the idea that students could have one study hall, but they could not have two. We didn't see the need for a student to be in a classroom, sitting, sitting there every day for ninety minutes doing nothing. Right? So they're sitting eighty-five minutes doing nothing except homework. They're not going to have that much homework to do. That wouldn't be appropriate use of the time. The reason why we have A is so students can have options. So we want students to be able to choose those options. So that would be what a typical schedule would look like for a student. So the, the schedule that we looked at has, on the left, it has the dates, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. School would still start at seven twenty-eight, school still ends at two forty. So we didn't change any, any of that. So buses are still running at the same time. Schedules are not being adjusted in that sense. What, what we looked at though is, so on Monday morning, we would have ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth graders in our school. We spent a lot of time and a lot of discussion, and this is where we had a lot of compromise. From, there was some of us that felt strongly that the, the, the less, the, the less students we could require to be there, the, the more options we could do with smaller groups of students. There were, there were others of us that felt strongly that we should have all kids there all the time and do something that would be productive for them. When we, as we discussed that and thought through it and looked at what people were doing, we came to a compromise of ninth, twelfth graders would come on Monday, ninth, twelfth graders come on Tuesday. We believe that on Monday, it'll be pretty easy for us to have a set schedule. Every Monday, our school is engaged in something that's the same, whether it's academic and career planning, whether it's working the other teacher as a homeroom and figuring out, you know, how are my grades doing? What's going on with that in a small group? Whatever it may be, whether it's class scheduling, class meetings, Jostins, all those pieces. There's going to be something for kids to be able to do on that Monday, on one day a week. On Tuesday, we then have it for ninth and twelfth graders again. And this is where we get to those options. Now we're allowing students options. Where do you want to go? What do you want to do? What are some of those things that would really be enrichment opportunities? What are some of those, those opportunities for students that need interventions as well? And then on Wednesday, we start graduating it out. So the seniors, as seniors, would be allowed to not come to school for the resource type. They'd be required to come to first hour, which would start at eight thirteen every day. But they would not be required to come on that Wednesday. On Thursday, we have late start. We're still having discussions about currently, we have, we require freshmen and sophomores who have multiple Ds or Fs in core academic subjects to come in during late start and they meet with their counselors. We're having discussions, are we going to continue that? Will we expand that? So eleventh and twelfth graders have to do that also? Will we just say, no, we have enough interventions, we have enough time to let me get help with kids that we should, teachers, we aren't going to need that? So that's part of our, our discussion still. And then on Friday, we would have just ninth and tenth graders be required. That would probably be once a month that we would have those, that mentoring program occur. Some of those other activities that we have just for freshmen and sophomores. And by having less students in the building, we can have smaller groups of students doing various things and so forth. And you can see the block one, block two, block three, because of our cafeteria and, and commons being the way they are. We have three lunches and we can't, we, we've tried thinking of ways to like open it to. And if it was nice every day, then we could, just get to go outside. But realizing that like eight months out of the nine months, that won't happen. We, we had to have three lunches. So if we ever want to do anything about that, I would be totally in favor of that, by the way. But, um, cause that is like the worst part of our building. But everything else is really nice. So the lunchroom, so we have three lunches and then we have our fourth block, which is my own personal. Advantages of the A B block. You haven't heard that before? Should I say that yet? Should I say that about it? I have a lot of people there. I have a lot of people that could like talk about it. I think there are a lot of these people that talk about it. Anyways, here are some of the advantages of A B block that, that Mr. Reddick gave us. And then two of the schools that we visited, Port Washington and Franklin, had shared some of their data points that they had shared after their first year. So in two thousand and eleven, Franklin had just completed, but was just in the midst of completing their, their first year of having a resource period. And they said, first quarter, we saw better than a thirty percent drop in failures as compared to first quarter of the previous year. And then semester, they had a thirteen percent reduction in, in failures over that first semester of the previous year. Because of the, the block scheduling, they, they did increase their number of courses. They have about fourteen hundred kids, but they did increase their courses. They went from eight thousand three hundred and two classes taken to ten thousand three hundred and ninety-four classes taken. So students did take more classes. But even with that twenty-five percent increase in students taking more classes, they actually still saw a thirteen percent reduction in, in course failures. Port Washington, two thousand and thirteen, their student behavior, it's a, resulted in a dramatic reduction in behavior referrals on block period days and over a thirty percent reduction from last school year during the same time period. Student failures was reduced by this semester compared to last year first semester by over ten percent and by over twenty percent for students with multiple failures. And they also had a twenty percent increase of, from one semester to the next of students that earned all grades of C minus or higher. So they saw students in the block being able to focus on, instead of focusing on seven classes or eight classes in a day, they're focusing on four classes a day. And then one of the parent comments that was made, one of our things was, it is probably more of a higher education model. You're focusing on a couple of classes at a time. One of the things I think that, I think our staff, I know our staff works extremely hard to get the results that we're getting and the drop schedule perpetuates teacher burnout. And the idea that three, that two out of every eight days, teachers are teaching six out of seven. On those six out of seven, when they teach six out of seven, two out of every eight days, as parents, our parents still expect them to meet with kids over lunch. They still expect them to meet with their kids during their prep period, before school, after school, it doesn't matter. They're getting labs ready, they're trying to prep, they're still got some days to work with kids. Going to a schedule like this and having a resource period as well as a block, I think is going to help our teachers be able to settle down, be able to see fewer kids daily, be able to know them better, more deeply, make connection with them, which is going to help our kids in the long run in that sense as well. And then, and as you can see, the last thing is students are going to have fewer classes to focus on, which should be positive. So what we'd like to do, the reason why we've, we've had this going on since two thousand and twelve is because we want, this isn't a sprint, this is more of a, a marathon. We're, we're trying to get ready for something and we haven't been in a hurry. And so we want to take it this year and focus on professional development time. So we still have some questions to ask about resource time. We spent a lot, we spent hours of time talking about resource in our committee as well as, as a school. And so we still need to develop those options. How are we going to take attendance? How are we going to talk to kids about it? All those pieces are things that we need to flesh out in the next school year. Active learning strategies. You know, we already go from a fifty-two minute class period to an eighty-five minute class period. We've already, so with schools that have gone to this and there's, Bill Blanks is someone who is an expert in this area that does professional development for that. So we're going to be bringing someone in to work with our soft and active learning strategies. Bring in other department chairs as well to talk about content area things. That whole focusing our curriculum and then, that blended learning opportunities. That's something that we know as we move into the learning initiative with one-on-one in fifth and sixth grade. In three years, you know, high school looks like dramatically different. And that's not going to happen overnight. You can't, we, we can't expect kids to show up with laptops tomorrow and all of a sudden we're teaching differently. We got to prepare for that. And that's what one of our things will be this year is, is how can we better prepare our staff? And will that look like as we get kids coming in that are going to use that? You know, bring your own devices, sort of open that up. And we're seeing more use of that. We started data retreat, looking at some of those things, but we're going to need to prepare more for that. So we're going to spend the year with our professional development time being focused on that in order to have fifteen, sixteen, starting to fall with a new schedule. What we'd like to do, we talked about as a committee as well as in the springtime, the fourteen, fifteen, try and run a, a window of time and run a practice schedule. So you sort of get the kinks out of it. Something's going to go wrong. And then discuss that over the summer, find two minutes on the fall, you start off with a schedule that would be a better running schedule and, and have some of those kinks out of in that sense. So I have talked for a long time, twenty-five minutes. And so what I'd like to do is have our committee members come down and then any questions you have, they can answer.
Jeff, before you leave, if you want to, or if there's something, are there parent meetings? Like they want to, parent reception?
Sure. Parent committees, uh, you were all like different ones. They were very good. Really well. No, it was, it was, it really was very, if you read the Google Doc, very positive comments, very positive comments. Questions that were probing, questions, we had a lot of questions about the resource period. And, and, but very like probing questions that were positive. Sarah, you were at that, you were at those. And both of them were very positive. Felt like people just wanted to help us be successful. And I remember Duane and Charrington even saying to one of the parents, you know, that, you know, this would have been great for her kids as a freshman. So like, it's really been a really strong comment on all of us that this is like going to be the best thing for our high school. This is going to help our kids. And that it was similar thread, I don't think, you were both, you were one. I don't think it was at both. Do you have both of them?
No.
I think you want to go. Uh, so, but it was, it was very, very positive, very positive.
So during the, trying to envision how this will look, if there is a resource time, what would it look like? Would it be available in their classrooms for students? So I think that would be great. But I also think if no one's going to come in, that'd also be another way to do some collaboration as well. So how, how does that look? If people come in on Monday and go to their homeroom and Tuesday, you know, they might need some interventions. Is that teacher for sure going to be available or how does that look?
Those are some of the things that we talked about that we do have to iron out. And it might run differently on different things.[1707.14] it might run differently on different things. Um, and some of the schools that we looked at, they had, I talked to some teachers who were working, they were assigned on a certain day or kind of intervention. So they couldn't necessarily help their classroom kids that day, but they still felt good about it because they still have them after school, before school, um, the next day maybe, whatever it could be. So it may be, and we're also, I know especially in the math department and probably in any of the departments, so if I'm assigned, you know, for a day to work with intervention kids, Mr. Collin can help my students, you know, I mean, so we do have kind, I think we, that's one of the things we've talked about is how do you get this resource place to go to? Okay, I need some social studies help, I can go to this place and maybe my teacher might not be there on this designated day, but somebody could be there.
Yeah.
So those are the things that we do need to work out and that we've talked about and that's how do you, practicality make it work, but those are the things that we do want to cover.
So a student comes around, let's say fifteen minutes in math and then maybe twenty minutes in, 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 is it so easy to remember or is that the, is that the idea?
I was fortunate to be in the student, the student discussions and Bobby, maybe you can speak to that, but, um, one student in particular, um, stuck out to, to, I think Bobby and I at one point where there was a student at Wachowski West and he was, he was one of their top students in, or, oh, Frank, that's right, I'm sorry, Franklin. One of their top students in their, in their junior class and he has different opportunities because of activities that he's involved in to be gone for days or weeks at a time. And he said on, on a particular day that we were there, he, uh, within the forty minutes resource, resource period, he was able to get around to, uh, three different teachers to get, uh, either to get missing work made up or get support for things that he had missed in that, that amount of time. And then his turnaround catching, catching up to where the class currently was, was significantly less because he was afforded those types to, to garner that support during the resource time. So he felt within, I think it was within, uh, three days, he had all tests and materials made up to be able to be right on the same page as the, uh, as the rest of the class.
Sure. And then, starting with collaborative time, is that also an opportunity for that year line, depending on all watches, have we talked about that?
We want to keep collaborative time, collaborative time.
I got that, but additional collaborative time during the three hours.
What did we talk about collaborative time? We're thinking that, that we'll have enough people doing like intervention things or just kids getting help, like leading, leading up to an assessment or even something that like, like, um, one of our associate teachers started, you know, like fishing club, having like a fishing club. I mean, like, you know, there's, there's so many different things that people are interested in getting kids, you know, like the Simpsons club that we have out there? We have a Simpsons club, um, it meets after school. You know, we have a ton of different clubs that meet after school, before school, and not all kids can attend those things. On Thursday morning during collaborative time, we have NHS will meet, SUCO will meet, uh, Fellowship Christian Academy will meet, there's all kinds of, it, it, smart team meets, there's a ton of different clubs that meet during that time and kids have to make choices because they can't go to everything. But, um, we think with some of these opportunities we're bringing out, it's going to be really good for kids to make choices. And so we didn't talk about more collaboration because we think we're going to need our teachers available for kids and working with kids.
Yeah. If you're going to, in the proposed schedule, it was on a, Wednesday, Thursday and Friday when the seniors won show, the juniors won show, that's going to allow opportunities to have meetings with smaller groups of students instead of offering more. So it, it, you can see that being extremely valuable and I think about opportunities for students, I think about teachers meeting the students and not necessarily using that as a collaboration.
We did look at the numbers that we had, we had all students attending every day for resource period. The breakdown between, uh, certified staff and student ratio was seventeen, above seventeen students to one, which isn't, I mean, that's a real manageable number, um, for a variety of things. And then it went down significantly from there. So I think when we got down to, uh, just having the freshmen and sophomores coming in for the, for those periods towards the end of the week, then we're down to about eight or nine students per certified staff to be able to do a variety of activities.
Sure. Now, with currently with late start, um, some of the kids have to come in, we talked about the criteria for that. So when you're dealing with interventions, there's going to be criteria for that as well and then there's going to be criteria for the eleventh and twelfth graders not to come. Saying if they're not doing well in school, are they going to have to come in those days when they're exempt anyway? I mean, and, and you talked about those kind of guidelines because, you know, if, if they're not coming in and they're doing quarterly work, kind of doing a disservice of we're allowing them not to come in despite themselves, I know it's a parental issue, but is there a certain qualifying or anything like that in those regards that you talked about?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I would love the Thursday morning study because it costs too. I think we've, we've talked about that, I don't think we've come to a conclusion about whether or not we're going to continue the Thursday morning study. Right now, the qualifications, right, they have to have two or more Ds or Fs in a core class to come in for that time period. Um, so personally, I, I mean, I think that time is worthwhile and for juniors, for seniors, I, unfortunately, I see many juniors and seniors who have more than two Ds or Fs to go for classes. Um, so if more intervention type for them, I think would be valuable, but I just don't think we'd completely decide that.
We talked a lot about the stigma of kids that are required to come in, like they feel a stigma of like everyone else gets to sleep in and I don't get to sleep in and a way you have to do it by doing better in school, of course. Um, but, um, you know, the, the reason why we chose freshmen and sophomores is because it's manageable. Because I think we have probably sixty kids in there.
Sometimes more.
Right, about that. So between four counselors and Kyle in there, Kelly and Jody are in there. Um, you know, there, so you get to make a manageable number as well. Um, but yeah, so we've had those discussions, should it be graduated, um, you know, required? The, the thing is, students are still being required to come to school at eight thirteen. One of the benefits of having resource before school, there's a ton of research in literature that talks about students needing more sleep before they start school at the high school level and, but every school struggles with trying to make that happen because of, whether it be athletics, whether it be jobs, whether it be siblings they need to pick up, whatever it may be, a variety of things. The resource period in the morning, although they have to be here as they are, and they're just sleeping in, they are getting an extra forty minutes to get that mind engaged before they start their core academic subjects or their elective subjects that first hour. So there'll be a benefit in that. Um, but we've had a lot of discussion about, it was a lot of discussion about who are we requiring to have come and, um, and why are we, and, and, and Chris, there are very few things we do at the high school that don't revolve around data. Um, so there's usually a logic, because then we can explain to people why we're requiring you to do something. So everything will be, we'll have criteria that will be pretty solid and easily understood and the kids can, they choose to just improve and then meet that criteria so they don't have to do that.
Is there, I can just follow up on that. In addition to whether they would come, uh, are there any safeguards to ensure that a student who needs intervention is not choosing to use that time to go fishing or, you know, whatever?
And I think that's kind of the, the attendance piece that we really need to figure out. Um, some of the schools have done like backwards with Skyward where kids are all marked absent and then they show up somewhere they're not present. Some of the schools use Google Docs, so then they're sent out to teachers, I know that I need to see these five kids. So if, if, you know, Jimmy's supposed to be in intervention and he's not there with me, then, then we know that we have follow-up on that. And I think that was what administration was doing a lot of the time during the resource time, certainly making sure that it's in the right time.
To your point, um, that's why we chose to have the freshmen and sophomores there all four days, um, that we could, we could build much more intervention and get much more bang for our buck if we focus on them early in high school to have greater success later on in high school. Um, as well as if we have the freshmen sophomore, there's sophomore there four days and let's say they, they're in need of intervention, math, reading, whatever it might be, they could, they could actually, two days of intervention and still have choices for enrichment. Because we didn't want to get away from the standpoint of, uh, because we visited, uh, Wachowski West with the example, like, they forced their kids to come in for, for intervention, they're freshmen, all come in whether they needed it or not. It was, uh, pretty, pretty heated in our, in our student discussion as to, uh, they were very upset and wanted us to voice back to their administration how upset they were about their current predicament. Um, we felt if we could get them in here four days, they had two days of enrichment, or two days of intervention, they still had two days to enjoy some enrichment activities that other students were afforded as well. We would be missing out on those opportunities to engage them in their academics yet still allowing them to grow in other, in other things that, that they wanted to be.
Sure. On a different topic, uh, how will, uh, the resource, do our, uh, impact special ed students who now use a period, many times in study hall period, whatever else, meeting with an advisor or whoever else? Does that be incorporated into this resource period or how, how would that be?
Uh, it, it, if, uh, it's dependent on, we, at the different schools we visit, they, they, they use their special education services in a variety of ways. Uh, it's something that, um, as Jeff mentioned earlier, of doing more professional developments around those areas of bringing in content area specialists. Uh, we had, uh, myself and one of the special education teachers, um, were able to talk to some of the special ed, uh, staff at Franklin High School. They were able to get into smaller groups during the resource period, address some of those things. Uh, but also it allows these students that were struggling in a particular area, let's say that there was a particular group of students that were struggling with algebra, they could then go to the content area specialist and not just their special education support for people to get that support. So it's pretty varied as to how that worked out. It would probably necessitate a little bit of discussion about special ed, but, um, very manageable to use the resource time as a possible time to meet with special education staff, but also afford those students those opportunities to get intervention directly with an English or math or social studies or science teacher as well.
One of the things I really liked about this is you're kind of flipping the classroom about flipping in that, figuring the instructions, but you're also having the time of the teachers to do that, to work on things one-on-one or one-on-ten or, you know, however it's going to be. Um, with that said, I'm wondering, um, if you see homework decreasing as a result of that, you know, the actual work done at home, um, you know, kids staying up like you said late and maybe they have a job, maybe they have a buddy, that's how you get homework at some point as well. They're not getting that sleep. So what do you think, Bobby?
Yeah.
Come on, it did come up. I mean, during our discussion.
It did come up during our discussion, you know, speaking about how some of the kids broached their homework and things like that.
Well, I even thought that besides having this resource period, working on homework with the block as well, you're getting more time with your teacher, be asking them questions instead of going home, getting home late, trying to do your homework and like, be like, oh, I don't understand how to do this and then wait, not do it, wait till tomorrow. This way, when you're doing work at school, you're kind of helping yourself out, not getting yourself in those kind of situations, nothing that helps us.
Sure. So the answer?
I was going to say, they're usually having them three or four classes per day too. So a kid's not, a student is not going home thinking about the seven classes that they had, but the teachers all give them fifteen, they have none of them, or more. And homework, there's four math classes that they're going to have.
Yeah. And I also like it because you're, in my mind, like you're going to the class, you're sleeping in it that night, you're thinking about it, then you can still go the next morning. And then you're done, you start fresh with the D schedule. So I think that's pretty neat. And then you mentioned, I'll stop talking, you guys.
So gross.
Mentioned you went to schools, you saw some good and bad. Um, and just some thoughts on that and then I, Bobby, if you could, if you have your opinion on what you saw as good or bad, or if you're still up here now.
Bobby? Okay. Well, I had started with board and I know, I think a lot of people, or like my classmates would enjoy it at the end of the day, but I just think no one would be corrupted at all. Like everyone just kind of wants to go there, sit down, not do anything for a good hour and just go home, which really, people don't do anything. I mean, I've had, if they were studying, I had days where I just go and sit there and I just can't do my homework because it's been such a long day. So I really thought it was helpful, like Franklin, seeing in the morning, there was, it was a lot of, it was way more corrupted, there were way more kids actually doing stuff, getting stuff done.
How do you, uh, how do you engage those kids that are a little tougher to engage? You know, how do you come at it as a group of fifteen kids who are sitting around the table and just talking about last night's Monday night game? Is there a kind of strategy that, that you have to kind of, uh, again, engage those students and talk about their interests? I mean, does it turn into just another study hall for some kids and just clear any?
You know, I think for some kids it's going to, and I, and I don't think that's a bad idea in a lot of states. Like some of these kids are cranking it pretty hard. You're, you're taking some really difficult classes and you're trying to do that eight different times and you've got all these other things going on. So for some kids, I think it will be a stress reliever to not have to be going all the time. And I, and I think kids are going to take more rigorous classes. All the students, probably your whole group talked about, like, I don't even know if I need to study all night, right? And I speak for you, but, yeah, I will. Wait, did you guys talk about that?
Yeah. You said that we need like killers and you need that whole block where they're studying all.
So they learned about that and were they, you know, talking about like music, some music kids get together and practicing their music during that time. And like you see kids that now during lunchtime, they don't want to go to lunch, so they go into the band room and they'll sit there and play their instruments. And that's just their, that's their, that's their spot, like that's their safe spot. Kids go in the art room and they do art. I mean, like, I think some kids are just going to do things like that and maybe, are you on last night's game, is that, is that the worst in the world? Unless they're not doing well in school.
Right.
Then, then we have to have things in place that would help us sort of make sure kids are going to be successful. Um, but I, I don't know, I think our kids do pretty well when we treat them like adults. We have high expectations for them, we treat them like adults. And then that percentage of kids that go in there like adults, then we sort of deal with them on an individual basis. So we're going to have that. This isn't going to be a, a one-size-fits-all, we're not going to get all of our kids.
Right.
Um, but I, 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 we think it's going to be really good.
Well, I like it too. You mentioned, uh, you know, just the ability to bridge those connections a little bit more, because there has to be a huge correlation between, you know, connections, personal connections with teachers and then obviously performance. You're seeking that through the research and to a full. And, and not only that, I think even, uh, for kids to engage with other kids in a different model, they have more friendships and I think that's really healthy too. So I think it's great.
You know, with two, with teachers, so teachers are teaching in high school, you're teaching six different classes and an average of like twenty-five kids a section, okay? So you're having a hundred and fifty kids, you're supposed to know a hundred and fifty kids. Some of our teachers have a hundred and fifty kids and they have another hundred and fifty kids the next semester because they teach electives only, so it's semester classes. Like, it's really hard to get to know kids in that amount of time when you're going at that frantic pace. So it's only going to help them be able to make those connections with kids more when you're looking at less kids in a day. You're still going to have a hundred and fifty kids, I'm not going to have a hundred and fifty kids a day. Maybe if I'm lucky, I have a hundred and twenty because I got my two preps that day. But now it's going to be seventy-five kids a day and I'm going to have to know them at a deeper level, which will only help bring kids into school. Because they do say going to the block, attendance does go up. And that's pretty good, but it could be better.
I also think that they're going to talk about the game, no matter what, like you said, uh, you said.
I'm going to talk about the game.
But they won't be doing it in instruction time, during that eight-five minutes, they'll be doing it in that forty, you know, so.
I got a couple of questions. The, um, when that Mike Reddick came in, for some reason I thought, when he made his presentation last, I walked away thinking that, that kids sign up, in some of the schools, they sign up like two weeks in advance for those resource classes, but before they can sign up, the teachers can tag kids. So the question about if a kid isn't doing well, teachers could assign them up, on Tuesday you are in a resource session because we're reviewing math or science or social studies. Is that still the concept that you were kind of checking out or?
Well, we need to figure out what that scheduling piece looks like. So yes, we.
I thought that was really neat. I think technology wise, it's pretty complex to, you know, start.
And no one's, no one's marking that piece yet. No one's marking that piece yet. But yes, that's, but yes, that's, the idea is how would we, if we know math, kids need to know the math, how would we learn with fifteen kids that really, really need it? And the kids who just need a minute, they can stop, you know, at a different time.
And you talked about, hey, you know, teachers will tell you, hey, you can sign up tomorrow for classes for this, you know, two weeks out. Remember we have a chemistry test in two and a half weeks? So you might want to think about signing up for that resource. You know, I thought that was a really good, almost like studying all the specifics for that course, but before the kids get it, the teachers could tag kids. I thought it was a great idea to help those kids and be able to get that to work. Um, the other thing, I was trying to do some math about my cap later, which I'm not really good at. Uh, but I was, at, at first I looked at it and struggled a little bit with the last of, you know, six hours of instruction time, because that was always a knock. You deal with the eight-hour day versus seven-hour days with your kids. If they love chemistry, they're missing one, seven, some, a semester of chemistry, I don't miss them one semester, semester of chemistry, I don't know how many days that is, but that was always the knock about it. And I would encourage you to not, at least from my perspective, to not lock yourself in having the exact same day or week of the day. I mean, I think if you had two minutes to a day, you make up those six hours a year. I mean, two minutes a day is really minimal. I think that will make up those time periods, if, if it's, you know, well-used time periods. So I, I would, I remember asking Mr. Reddick that question, because that's, that's an issue that I don't, he didn't like to get into that, because that's longer, you know, days for teachers and things like that, literally a couple minutes, and it makes up about a hundred and eighty days, you know, six hours of time. So you don't have that many, that's sort of that, and a sheet that, oh, she were even getting further behind, but that's a sub number, that's a subset, and when you get to do later numbers, it's, it's more.
Because, because if we cared, because if we really, really, really cared about the number table, we would go to the seven, we'd just go to seven classes, or we'd go to six classes.
Yeah, that's, that's what we'd go.
I know, that's, that's, because that's the argument that we use with people. Exactly, that's what we use that argument with people that would, that said that, though, it was like, well, the only, so we have to be careful in that sense, but I know what you're saying, we're running tight right now with our buses, like when, when we went to, remember, remember we started seven-thirty-five four years ago, and we went to seven-twenty-eight so that we could have a flat of the time? And that, and we went to seven-twenty-eight, we didn't go to seven-twenty-seven or seven-thirty-six intentionally, because seven-twenty-eight is when the buses come with F I L kids and, and Webster kids, and then go to the elementary schools. So that's what got us pretty close. I mean, it was like, because we, I remember looking hard at that study, and we couldn't adjust, because it was gonna cost more money, um, to do that. So I appreciate what you're saying. I totally agree.
Yep, I agree. And to that bus question, this is kind of the side note, I mean, you talked about kids starting later, I love your forty minutes, it's your brain going first hour, but I always wondered, we talked about it for years, why did the high schools start later than the elementary schools? In the old high school, kids need more sleep, generally are tired, tired, why don't you look that around, look at that? I, I don't know, just wanted to add there, I mean, it's part of your class schedule, it is much more complicated for us to sort that out, to put your kid there at elementary school.
Because they get out, because they get out, because they would wait out in like three thirty-five.
Yeah, but, yeah.
A little later, it's certainly thirty-five, like they can sports practice starting at four, kids can't start working until later.
Yep.
And then, all those pieces, so yes.
That's the very point, same, I was just saying. I would encourage you not to say we're locked in on all these variables, but we have to have that as, as our day, and the papers here.
Yes. Oh, thanks. They are early.
K E N I.
E Y. Yeah, I really liked the, the block, I thought that was really neat.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, they spend a day, they'll be taking attendance four times versus eight, so I kind of think, probably make that.
It's an efficiency thing, they don't make up, that's what I'm watching the apps, yeah, they don't make up that six hours.
Okay, good.
It's a little bit of a tickle. It is a little bit sticky too, like when we talked about the first writing, when you're gonna pull this off for seniors, there's an hour that is my seniors on the first hour. So there's one hour we do right there, that that's pulled out, so it's, it's not quite the six that it's taking.
Yeah, that's true, because we, we, well, and, and they're all important, you know, relatively, so.
Yeah, but we can shift them into a time period.
Right, right.
And, and kind of that, the question of the length of the school day, I don't know how it works with the snow days, but the number of hours here we add, if you do it by hourly basis, I thought the D P I does it that way? It looks like we're adding to the length of the school day, we avoid the snow day issue, which somebody will do that.
You know, our issue isn't a snow day, I saw it, even with the snow days we had, we still, we could have one.
The state's gonna count the time the same, they count passing time, they really go from the start of the day to the end of the day, minus lunch, so you're not really picking up, we should be okay, Jeff and I talked a little bit about making sure we meet the state requirements, so we'll, we'll meet that.
Given our snow days is passed here, we're good for the next eleven. We're on C P A.
My last question, just to put it right, so it sounds like this year you wanna keep working on it, and the potential of next year, you know, a year and, uh, three weeks from now, you're starting with this.
Actually, I shall throw it, I, Kevin, I thought the same thing you did with the six-hour piece, I thought we're losing that, and I started thinking, as you ran some different questions, with the efficiency comment team, I think they're gonna make that up, and if we put it aside, you know, we're reevalving.
My big question, Jeff, would be for freshmen coming in, longer class periods that aren't used to it, I would imagine there'll be some thought processes on how to keep the kids settled in as they have longer hours.
That whole, that number four right there, so active learning strategies in order to effectively teach in block, and we have a couple of people that are here to kind of taught in the block, of taught in class, and, and you can reflect on that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I taught at home, said the first year, the trimester, so it was, I think classes were like eighteen minutes, they were full and I E, and I taught freshman that year, and actually I taught freshman adjusted better than the seniors and seniors I was teaching, and I think we really actually with the active learning, it gets them like out of their chairs, and we learn all sorts of different techniques to keep them active, and I, I mean, I think that my kids were better behaved than they were in the fifteen-minute type period, so we didn't have any problems with that.
And that will be the professional development that will go with that, is giving ideas for what does that look like? So we are transitioning every fifteen, fifteen minutes or doing something different, and that's us.
I can say we're looking at opportunities in K twelve, so at the elementary level, we're looking at blocks of time as well, so kind of hard, so we have kids that are receiving instruction in blocks of no less than ninety minutes, not only fifty, and math ninety minutes, and also at the middle school, we're looking at some block scheduling there, where they can have periods up to eighty-four minutes, is it, is that what we're looking at? So i- it's, eventually our students are gonna, it's, it's gonna be very active, but it's pretty, I think, that might be fair.
That's nice, I didn't think it was gonna stop them at these walls, but that's even better. My other piece, um, I, I do like a lot of the comments that you made, and how this is structured out. My last comment or question, Jeff, is, as you went through these, through those schools, do they still keep collaborative time, or do they even have collaborative time? I, I agree with you, that is the best thing I've ever seen of this high school, and we've got such an advantage out of that, so I'm glad to see that you wanna keep it in there.
Franklin High School does, Franklin High School still does, and Pro Washington does, and Pro Washington went with a, um, they, 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 they have the two-day block and a three-day, um, like just regular class periods, three days, so they didn't really go full, they did anything, and they only have, so they resource twice a week, um, and Block Show West doesn't, we're running now.
They have a good foundation.
I don't know if Block Show West does or not, I don't think so.
Franklin did keep their collaborative time.
So you get to see the limitations.
Yes, I mean, it's great, I hear that also.
Yep, yep, thank you.
I thank you very much for your presentation, from what I think, well done.
I have a good question.
I was just gonna say, I think it's gonna better prepare our seniors that go on to college too, because like my son has three, three-hour class periods, and I think, you were talking about incoming freshmen, I think it's gonna prepare those seniors that are going on better for college.
Just to wrap things up, ten months ago, we shared with you that we were on this journey, uh, it started years earlier, but we're on a journey to try to bring some, some closure and, and try to, you know, break the conversation regarding the use of time, which is a, the most precious resource we have for a student. And, uh, so we, uh, shared with you that we would, uh, do this K fall, so we could take a look at what was, and that we would do our best to use the best minds possible to make the best decision. And so, uh, I just wanna thank, um, the staff at high school, Jeff, for your leadership, um, it's been great to be able to watch and listen to the conversations that have been, um, difficult conversations at times, a lot of controversy, a lot of differences of opinion, which is important, uh, and, uh, just as a, as a reminder, of course, uh, there is no, there is no board policy that indicates that the, the board, uh, has set an expectation and you would approve any changes to school settings. Uh, you want to be aware of those, you want to give input to them, but, um, you have indicated that that is a professional responsibility, uh, and you simply want to make sure that your, your voice is heard. So, uh, the, the goal this evening was to ensure that you felt comfortable in terms of the direction of going, um, knowing that schedules are never perfect, uh, it simply means that the schedule of the first year, uh, will, the second year will be better than the first year. Uh, that's the way this process typically works. And, uh, and Jeff and his staff, uh, will be moving, starting next month, uh, in professional development, ramping up and having conversations about what life looks like in fifteen, sixteen. So just wanted to share with you, if you'd like to change that approach, that's fine, because that's a, that's a board, you know, that's, that's a board decision, but at the present time, uh, we're moving forward, uh, with this great input, um, and we'll definitely consider and, and reflect on how we can address these as well as things that, that will surface in those conversations. Um, but we'll be moving forward on this, uh, unless, uh, there's a concern that you have that we need to, uh, we need to come back around and, and develop policy very quickly, uh, that, that addresses it. So just so that you know kind of where, where things are at from our perspective, because there's a lot of work on the horizon, uh, to, for Jeff and the staff to feel comfortable that when students come, uh, next year, day one, that, that standard timeframe, uh, the classes are, are as productive and beneficial for learning as, as they can possibly be. So, so you're okay?
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah, if you can show us the timeline, and, uh, pages updated.
Updated, yeah.
And maybe go through, uh, break in, uh, daily curriculum, and make it available, and, and it's great. Thank you for coming, and I just, warm, warm days of summer, especially you, Bobby, you dressed there tonight. We love you.
It's not a huge challenge.
I, I.
I would say that, we talked about this at our parent-teacher meeting all the time this year, and there's been very, there's just been very positive comments about this, and I think like having students involved and parents involved and our staff involved, it's been very transparent, and I know that, you know, before, seven, eight years ago, it wasn't as good, there, there, there's a lot of, you know, uh, uh, emotions around this schedule thing, and we're happy that it isn't like that, but I think, like, having students and parents and teachers is really beneficial, and, like, they dress like this when they go on site visits as well, and people talk about that, and other kids look like, it's good stuff.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for coming. All right, moving right along to the I M F, the budget again, Karen.
This is simply to approve the budget that was presented, the budget here.
Will be approved. Second. Have motion in the second, and again, um, we had the hearing before that's per statute, and now we're simply considering a motion to approve what we've been working on, what was presented earlier, so have a motion in the second. Hailings in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries. Thanks, thanks for all your work. M G, approve two thousand fifteen through seventeen, A for performance.
Uh, the, I want to, over the document, there's been an anonymous conversation, great great input from the board, I want to thank you very much for, uh, all of the very helpful, uh, clarifications, suggestions, uh, for the benefit of the audience, this will be the first time that we have a compensation rebate plan, uh, that's, uh, in place, uh, happens to be three-year plan, uh, it is a performance-based plan, it is reference, referencing effective performance based on a state model of evaluation, uh, it is, uh, something that, um, I believe addresses a number of the issues that staff members, teachers expressed in surveys during, uh, last year, that they would like to, to see, uh, hopeful, hopeful changes in terms of, um, compensation expectations. If the board approves this evening, then, uh, what we would, kind of, and I will do is meet with the staff members, be able to share, uh, if this is the first, uh, reading, approval of first reading, um, goal would be to bring the final review in September, with any feedback on staff orders that, uh, would be helpful to you, and then you can determine whether you'd like to make those adjustments. Do I recommend approval? We have to entertain any questions. I don't have any questions, just a comment, I think it's a, it's, it was a neat process that you went through, um, the evolution from the, the system we had before, which was kind of the first ever, I think, approach to, in the state, you were kind of reinventing the wheel that wasn't invented yet, and you were reinventing, and trying to come up with a totally new system, and, um, I really liked the system that you focused on, the key initiatives that the state used, and you focused more heavily on what I thought, you weighed it in, in the right way, that how the teacher does the instruction, assessment, and professionalism from the classroom and outside of the classroom. I thought it was a great way to, to do that, that not, you know, the learning environment and it's planning, and it's all super important, but, um, I like the way you weighed it, and I was really impressed with, uh, with the end result, or the draft, and it was all coming out here, and I just, back from the staff.
I agree with you, Kevin, and, uh, I also like the fact that, much like our, our district is a whole, we go above and beyond the state, so what the model for the state is for the grading system, you might be distinguished, but you have criteria above and beyond to be distinguished in Seaterburg, so, um, and Kevin mentioned those three different areas that are crucial to that, so I, I also like that.
Thank you. I move. Or we move. Yeah? I move. Second.
Have motion in the second, any more discussion?
I'd just say, well done. If each of the one that had one, we, you've done a very good job, kind of, thank you.
I, I don't remember that.
I don't understand, you're all apologizing.
Thanks, especially, thank you. Any further discussion? Motion second, who is in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries, M's. All right, and engage superintendent's notes.
The boys' side, I'm going to, I'm starting something to, I have to go read for someone. Sure. Annually, uh, boards need to be presented with information on how many students were secluded or restraint during school year, uh, per Act one twenty-five, the use of seclusion and physical restraint tools, and what we have in front of you is the report for this past year. Um, we have in-house trainers, so we continue to monitor, um, the number of seclusion and restraints that occur during our schools, and we make sure that when it does occur, it's done properly, that if there is a pattern of such seclusion or restraint, then we are, um, obligated to, um, meet with the parents, with the I P, and adjust accordingly, so that's not a, um, an option that continues to be used pursuant to any impact. And, um, the board does not need to approve this, it's just merely an FYI, it's just a report that, that we would probably come up with.
Correct. Does the, uh, the report anywhere, anywhere indicate the number of, it, it indicates number of licenses, but does it anywhere indicate the number of students or individuals involved, or is that something we have?
We do have that, we do have that, yeah. And I did ask for a copy of, um, the, um, recording documents, so I can look at those numbers, because what you may see is that it's just a few students who are being, right, that's the basis, and so the numbers may appear to be, um, more elevated than they actually.
And I, and if you don't have that, can I, is it, is it generally, um, can you give me a general view of, of the number of students?
That, that I, that I do not know, I, I can speculate just from my own experiences, that it tends to be, um, a handful of students who have repeat offenses, and so, um, we end up having, uh, ongoing I P meetings and developing behavioral plans to address those concerns, but generally it's, it's repeated offenders, so.
Thank you, Jeff. And just to be fair, the edging analysis is prepared by Joe, and, uh, and you would have intimate analysis, so.
Yeah, so, so, I've done my prior district, so no need to approve, just wanted to bring your attention.
All right. Thank you. All right, committee reports, Mr. Bray, insurance committee.
The insurance committee, oh, backup P N F, I think you heard a lot about the budget tonight, uh, a lot of work that was put in, Karen did a great job, and Kim will say. Insurance committee, we had a first, uh, meeting, um, Karen had selected with the help of Conrad and others, yeah, under, uh, insurance broker, and going forward, there's a number of smaller meetings set up from here till the end of October, I believe, uh, there'll be another P N F, I believe, in October, um, it'll be a committee, the P N F is actually dissecting downward a little bit, and the smaller committee is going to have involvement from the staff, uh, along with Karen and her team, um, Dave and I will pinch in when we can at those meetings, just to keep it consistent as to what's going on, or provide some information. That's all, all right? That's where we are with that, and the, the insurance is on the health insurance, I'm sorry, out of the dental, that'll be the case. That's the dental piece.
All right. Thank you. Now we'll consider motion to adjourn into executive session, which is anticipated, and we will approve the executive session minutes of July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, consider employment promotion compensation performance-related matters of superintendent or school board jurisdiction exercise responsibility pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen twenty-five and C, also consider employment promotion compensation and performance-related matters of employee or school board jurisdiction exercises responsibility pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C and confer with legal counsel with respect to litigation pursuant to nineteen point eight five one G, and we may also adjourn again into open session, where we will talk about employment promotion, compensation, performance-related matters of the superintendent over which the board has jurisdiction exercises responsibility at this time, on second motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second. A motion in the second to adjourn into executive session, all those in favor? Aye. Against, motion carries, M's. Thank you, everyone, for your presentation. Thanks, everybody.